Good evening. Welcome, everybody, to the Town of Golden Beach official town council meeting. First, we're going to start off with the agenda for the local planning agency hearing meeting called for 7:00 PM. Today's date is April 16th, 2019. Time is approximately 7:07 PM. Meeting officially called to order. Roll call, please.
Mayor Singer.
Here.
Vice Mayor Bernstein.
Here.
Councilmember Luskin.
Here.
Councilmember Mendel.
Here.
Councilmember Einstein.
Okay, we're going to start with the local planning agency meeting. And one item on there is an item number C on the agenda for the local planning agency hearing. Adoption of an ordinance amending the land development regulation. Ordinance of town council amending Chapter 66 of the town code related to the building height measurement and house of garage floor elevation and swale grade elevations.
An ordinance of the Town of Golden Beach, Florida amending the town's code of ordinances related to district regulations amending Chapter 66 entitled zoning, amending Sections 66-69.2 and 66-69.3 related to building height measurement, amending Section 66-101 relating to house and garage floor elevations in Section 102, minimum lot and swale grade elevations, providing for severability, providing for codification, and providing an effective date.
Perfect. Any motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Any second? Okay.
Mayor.
Sure.
Council, as you know, the reason the local planning agency meets to hear these items are to make sure that the items that are on the regular agenda are consistent with your comprehensive plan. Staff recommendation is that this item is consistent with your comprehensive plan. Staff review recommends that you vote favorably out of the lap so that we can go then and discuss the item at the regular town council meeting. There is nothing inconsistent with the comprehensive plan as it is this item.
Okay. Any discussion?
No. So the motion is actually just to find that the proposal is consistent with the comprehensive plan and to recommend its adoption.
Correct. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Anyone from the public? Okay. With that, we'll call the local planning agency adjourn and move into the regular town council meeting. Once again, today's date is April 16th, 2019. Regular town council meeting. Time is 7:10 PM. Meeting officially called to order. Roll call, please.
Mayor Singer.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bernstein.
Here.
Councilmember Luskin.
Here.
Councilmember Mendel.
Here.
Councilmember Einstein.
If everyone could please rise. And Chief, can you lead everyone in the pledge allegiance, please?
Sure. Can everyone please face the flag and repeat after me? A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Full house this evening. And welcome, everybody. I can't believe it's the April town council meeting. First, to start off the council meeting, we have some presentations. And the first presentation is going to be given by Chief Downey. Chief Downey is currently the Fire Chief of Miami-Dade Fire Rescue. He's a 37-year veteran for the fire service, working through the ranks of a firefighter company, battalion chief, division chief, and assistant fire chief. He serves as secretary treasurer to the Florida Chiefs Association and deputy coordinator for the Florida statewide emergency response plan and the fire representative to the executive board of the Southeast Regional Domestic Security Task Force. He's been a member of the urban search and rescue task force in Florida since 1991 and currently serves as one of the task force leaders. He has responded to numerous disasters domestically as well as internationally, including the World Trade Center, Hurricane Katrina, earthquakes in Haiti and Turkey. He currently serves as the East Coast sponsoring agency chief, representative for DHS and FEMA National Urban Search and Rescue Response Team, and is the former national task force representative for the system. He has an associate's degree from fire science and bachelor's degree in public administration and a master's degree in public administration. Chief Downey is a designated chief fire officer by the Commission on Professional Credentialing. I am honored to welcome him to Golden Beach and thanking him for his 37 years of service. And not only me, the council and the residents of Golden Beach want to welcome you.
My web search turned something up for if he serves as secretary.
Well, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, Mr. Manager, thank you. I see you've got the resume my mom wrote, so.
Make sure you intertune.
But I appreciate that kind introduction. And again, I'm here as your fire chief. Talk a little bit about your fire department and the annual report that we provided you. Enough about myself. And I also have with me Maria Reyes, who oversees our strategic planning and accreditation, certification, and within the fire department. Again, Miami-Dade Fire Rescue is a full-service fire rescue department. We operate 70 fire stations, 145 units. We're one of the 10th-largest fire departments in the United States. Last year, we responded to 260,000 calls for service here in the county, and we do that with about 2,600 personnel. 2,000 of them are firefighters. Last year in 2018, we were able to put two new units in the service in the county. We broke ground on a replacement station. We graduated five recruit classes, which translated into 131 new firefighters. We have a class going on right now and about to graduate another 40 firefighters and hiring another 40 firefighters at the end of May. That all translates into new service for us. I'm proud to say last year, we were reevaluated by ISO, the insurance agency, and we reduced our rating from a four to a two. So we're only one of 1,300 departments out of 46,000 departments that have a rating that good. We continue to get strong as everybody, you know, we went through some tough budget times, but we're doing better. This past April, we put three more units into service across the county, and we're going to continue to hire. So specific to the town, you actually have been around longer than the fire department has been around. But we've been providing service since our inception, really. Last year, we responded to 97 calls here in the town, and they're responded to primarily from Station 10, which operates a suppression unit and a rescue, seven firefighters total. But the important thing to understand is that because we're a fire department, we have six other stations within the immediate area, which includes five additional suppression units, one of them being a fireboat, and five rescues and two chiefs, so another 37 firefighters. And one thing I'm really proud about, our fire trucks are also paramedic units. So even though the fire truck arrives and you said, "Well, I called for a rescuer, I called for an ambulance," it's staffed and equipped, advanced life support, and has the paramedics. We continue to do well in our satisfaction surveys. Out of a possible five here in the town, we get five, so that's pretty good. Can't do any better than that. And we continue to work on our response times. You know, we've improved our alerting systems, our turnout times. Unfortunately, I can't do anything about traffic, but we continue to work on that. So I'm here to answer any questions you may have. I appreciate the opportunity. As you said, I'll be retiring here shortly, and I appreciate the opportunity and the support that we've gotten from the town. So thank you. Thanks to the police department. I think we've got a great relationship. We're just talking, the chief and I will make sure we're a part of your 90th anniversary, and we'll have some units up here. And thanks again.
We have, first, does anyone have any questions? Comments?
Just some quick observations. I know, you know, Chief, you've been a friend of Golden Beach ever since your appointment. And long before that, I know that the community has always shared a good relationship with Miami-Dade Fire Rescue. We've talked about some opportunities that we can work together in the future. Those opportunities are always available to us to continue that dialogue. And although your tenure may come to an end, we know that you have a great team in place, and we look forward to working with them. So if you could just convey that message to your team, that they know they have a friendly Golden Beach, and I know the mayor wants to do a special presentation at this point.
So we have this token of our appreciation for the chief for his 37 years of dedicated service to Miami-Dade County and the residents of town of Golden Beach, and we'd like to present you with this flag.
Yeah.
And although you're retiring, we know that you're not far away, so.
No, no. We're around.
Thank you.
It may be appropriate to see if anyone in the audience has a question for this chief.
Does anyone have any questions for the chief? Nope?
Chief, think.
One more thing, if you would. One of the things I've been trying to do since I was the chief is make sure that we're connecting the communities we serve with our organization. So I wanted to give you a present as well. We've created a seal, so that depicts your fire rescue service that hopefully you proudly display here. And, you know, it kind of captures our colors, which are green apparatus and our, when I started, our gray uniforms, so we have that on our apparatus. So this is for you. I'll leave it with you all, and thank you.
Come up for a picture with the council. The council. Could everyone get closer?
Get to the front.
Hot on the side.
Sure.
Oh, that's great.
Here, thank you.
Yes. Sorry.
All right.
Perfect. Thank you.
Chief, we know that Golden Beach is a little bit far away to get to, and traffic is always a nightmare, but thank you for joining us this evening. We appreciate it, and we look forward to working with you in the future.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Thank you for coming. Good luck with your retirement.
Ms. Reyes, you're not leaving, right? You're going to still be at the station?
Yeah.
So we'll bother you then.
I will still be here.
And thank you for being here, Ms. Reyes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Enjoy your retirement.
Thank you.
Okay. Next is a presentation by the FOP president, Dave Carazana, who has been employed with Golden Beach Police Department since 2012 and assigned to the IRS as a deputized federal task officer to investigate financial crimes involving money laundering and drug activity. He's the president of Golden Beach's Fraternity Order of Police Lodge 119. He was recently re-elected for a second term as president. Prior to joining Golden Beach Police Department, he was retired from the Coral Gables Police Department as a detective sergeant. He was also a former SWAT operator for 10 years and is a certified polygrapher and served the United States Air Force for over 10 years. His son is a major in the United States Air Force, and his daughter recently graduated from FSU. Welcome.
Go FSU.
Mayor, members of the audience at home, unfortunately, we can't put the camera on Mr. Carazana because he's a detached officer, so if you're looking at the cameras, sorry, you can't see his face.
Thank you for.
He's wearing a mask. No one knows.
Thank you for having me here tonight. I'm here on a twofold reason. One, when I inherited the lodge, our lodge was not memorialized or named after anyone, so I tried to find some history here at Golden Beach as to who would be a good candidate for that honor. So we found that there is a former chief that served in Coral, excuse me, in Golden Beach for approximately 16 years. His name was James W. Bryant. Chief Bryant, from our search in the history, he was promoted through the ranks, served 16 years, and one day while on duty, he was delivering a package to one of the residents, and he suffered from a heart attack and passed away on that day. That was 52 years ago, 1967. So we need to find out who James Bryant was, and we find that his spouse is still surviving. Joanne, Joan Bryant, she likes to be called JJ, is 98 years old, lives in Broward County in Century Village. So we went to meet her, and she gave us a little bit of history, a lot of history about Golden Beach and what James used to do as chief of police. He would, she told us he worked sometimes six days a week, 16 hours a day, and apparently at that time, there were only three officers working in town. And she told me a story that on occasions, when they would have an arrest and the chief would be transporting a female arrestee, she would call JJ to help him transport because there was no female officers and he didn't want to get accused of any wrongdoing. She was supposed to be here tonight. We were going to present her with this token of his appreciation, and basically, it, what it says on there, if you can bring it to me. I'm adjusting. So we're going to try to get her here for the anniversary. But basically, what this reads is the Golden Beach Fraternity Order of Police, James W. Bryant Memorial Lodge 119, whose personal life, professional achievements, and community service exemplified the ideals of the fraternity order of the police. Prior to working here at Golden Beach, he was also served in WWII as a Navy Seabee. And I spoke to the town manager the other day. One of the things I remember from Coral Gables is we had a historical department, and I think this town has been around as long as Coral Gables, and I think it'd be who's the council to consider creating that because I think this town has a lot of rich history. And JJ has still some of that. She talked about Edgar Hoover, and when her husband passed away, he sent two FBI agents because he would keep an eye on some of the residents that were former mobsters from New York that lived in town. So it was kind of interesting speaking with her. And that's what we're doing to memorialize his name and as a piece of history for the town.
Thank you.
In addition to that, we'd like to announce that the Golden Beach Fraternity Order of Police wants to get more involved in the community. And one of the things we found is we approved a scholarship program that is going to be opened up to the FOP members as well as the children of the residents that reside here in Golden Beach as well. We're going to be given two scholarships, $500 apiece. I have the applications here. I'll leave it with Lisette, and so we can get it out to the residents so they can apply for the scholarship.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Real quick, you know, as we talked about, you know, the new civic center and so on and so forth, you know, one of the things that David is correct, you know, we need to do a better job in terms of archivals. We have currently two offsite locations where we keep a lot of our history. And, you know, as we see the research that David did, Golden Beach does have a very rich history, and it's great that hopefully on a moving forward basis, as we build new amenities for our residents, part of those amenities is to try to capture the rich history that we have as a community. And so we look forward to that. And David, I just want to say probably to you and the leadership at the lodge, great jobs in the research that you've done. I've been super impressed with the amount of support that you've shown to JJ. For, you know, for years, no one from the town has ever reached out to her. And so when you guys did just a couple weeks ago, what you've done in such a short period of time, I'm sure has really changed her outlook on Golden Beach. So I thank you on behalf of the community for doing that, and we look forward for the lodge doing great things in Golden Beach. Thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you. Okay, moving right along, we have a presentation from the Florida Association of City Clerks. President Sandra Novio, who is the clerk of the city of Surcey's here tonight. Thank you. Welcome. Thanks, guys.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the city council. If I may ask through the mayor, if your city clerk Lisette, town clerk Lisette, could join me here at the podium?
Sure.
My name is Sandra Novo, and I am the town clerk of the town of Surcey. I am currently serving as the South District Director for the Florida Association of City Clerks. I am joined here also by someone that some of you might know, Evelyn Herbello. She's a deputy clerk for the city of Highland Hill Beach. Thank you for allowing us the opportunity to be here tonight to recognize your town clerk Lisette Perez for obtaining her certified municipal clerk. Lisette began her career in local government in 2007 when she joined the town of Golden Beach as executive assistant to the town manager. Within a year of joining the town, she has promoted, she was promoted to human resources director and executive assistant to the town manager. In May of 2010, she joined the town clerk's department as the interim town clerk. And in June 2012, she was appointed as a town clerk. She became a member of the Florida Association of City Clerk in 2010, and she has been working to achieve her certified municipal clerk designation since then, which we're very proud. She obtained it actually in November 2018, but due to previous commitment and my city commission meetings, I haven't been able to come here in front of you and present her. So currently, the Florida Association of City Clerk has over 337 members, and out of those 337 members, there are 225 members who have, who has achieved the certified municipal clerk designation. On behalf of the Florida Association of City Clerks and the South District, please join me and congratulate Lisette Perez in obtaining her certification. And we'll go ahead and put the CMC designation pin on her.
That's excellent.
We take very, very, we take proud in our designations, and if you will allow her to continue her learning opportunities, there's a master municipal clerk out there, so I hope that you continue and you achieve it soon, so we could come back here and present it again. Thank you all.
Congratulations. Thank you for coming.
And I just, I just wanted to take a moment. I usually don't speak, but I just wanted to thank the mayor and the council because you gave me this opportunity to further my studies and to become a better town clerk, and I'm going to cry.
If there's a way, we could take a picture.
Go up to Dana's. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Where should I stand? No, no. I'm tall.
Thank you. Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming. Thank you. Oh, pleasure. Thank you so much.
Congratulations, Ms. Nova and Mr. Bello.
Thank you.
Mayor, council, real quick, I know I speak too much, but Ms. Nova and Ms. Herbello, thank you. I know that it's, it's not always, it's not always the case when you have a member of your organization to read credentialing. I know that I'm working on my credentialing as a manager. It's very difficult, but we'll get there one day. But, you know, to have colleagues come and present before council is always very rewarding to have your peers recognize your efforts. I could tell you that when Lisette was hired in 2007, you know, it took her under my wings, and I trusted that she would go in this position. I never thought that she would be a credential clerk before I became a credential manager, but there she is, right? So you're making me look bad.
You've got to follow my lead.
But, but I know that I can speak on behalf of the mayor, and I can also speak on behalf of a lot of our residents. Whenever they reach Lisette for help or guidance or assistance, she's always there. All of our employees seem to trust her more than me sometimes. They tell her all their dirty secrets. But she is someone who is, who we have come to trust, to respect, and to value. I know that she's an integral part of my team, and I don't know what I would do without her. Everyone knows that she's the shadow manager. In fact, that's what our friends call her, the shadow manager. So Lisette, publicly, I want to say congratulations and thank you for your leadership, and thank you both for being here this evening to recognize our efforts.
Thank you for having me. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
There's always a smile on her face.
That's very true.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Enjoy. Moving right along, we have a presentation tonight from Michael Glitten, going over what is planned for the 90th anniversary. He's going to give us a little overview. Thank you, Michael.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Good evening. Yeah, I just wanted to speak a little bit about what the residents' services department's been working on, a couple of different projects in town, including our events plans for the 90th anniversary. So I'll first start off with that. We're going to kick off the event on May 19th, which is a Sunday. We're going to have a large-scale street fair with a 50-foot-tall Ferris wheel towering over town hall. We're going to have food trucks, lots of giveaways, some surprises, live music, a little bit of something for everybody, so it should be a great time. It's going to be from 1 to 7 on the 19th, so mark your calendars. Following that event on Tuesday, we'll have the council meeting, so we'll be here again. We'll do a special cake-cutting ceremony, just to kind of designate the 90th anniversary. Followed by that, we'll be doing a movie night in South Park. We'll have fresh pop kettle corn. We're going to announce the movie title later, so stay tuned for that. And then Friday, we're going to close out the week with a wine social event that's going to be at the Beach Pavilion. It'll be kind of a pass hors d'oeuvres, a refined night of wine invites, so come out and join us for that. That'll be a nice way to kind of wind down the week. And I also just wanted to briefly speak about the new residents' guidebook that will be coming to homes shortly. The council and mayor have already seen it, so you can ask them for any kind of insights into it. But it'll be coming to houses shortly. It includes basically everything that you need to know living in Golden Beach for seasoned residents or new residents coming to town. It covers everything from when and how trash is collected to amenities and resident perks that people living in town who've lived here for years may not even realize that they have access to. So we kind of wanted to put together a concise volume that's a go-to guide for anyone living here in town that they can use as a quick reference with any questions they may have. And I think that basically is it.
The guide, the residents will really enjoy it. You guys did a phenomenal job on it. Very inclusive. I mean, any question that you have is answered there, and for old residents and new residents, it'll be a big help.
Mayor, just two quick highlights. One, yes, the resident guide, which will be coming to your homes very soon, we had a lot of residents' input on that guide. We had a lot of community members who were invited to participate and giving us feedback and critique in it, so it took a little bit longer than we had originally planned, but we wanted to take the time to make sure that we got it right because, you know, printing these books are costly, and we don't want to print them too often. So this is a very comprehensive book. It will be going to your home very soon. When you receive it, please look over it, keep it in a safe place, somewhere that you can refer to it as you have information that you need answered. Circling back to the 90th anniversary, the reason we want to make a presentation tonight is the 90th anniversary is a big event. We're planning it as a big event, and we're putting a lot of our resources towards that event, and we want it to be a very successful event. So we want the residents and the council to help us get the word out that on the 19th of May, that Sunday, the event starts at 1:00 and it goes to 7:00 PM. The bulk of the programming is on the later side of the afternoon, so like the midway, yes, the midway, like the U-Fair midway opens a little bit later. I believe it opens at 2?
At 4:00.
At 4:00.
Yeah.
So the midway and all the major rides will open at 4:00, but there's a concert. There's a concert from 1:00 to 4:00 here in the town lawn, and there'll be food and refreshments. We strongly encourage you to invite your close friends and family to join us. We want this event to be a very filled and enjoyable event by our residents and the friends of the residents who tend to come and visit you often in Golden Beach. So May 19th on Sunday from 1:00 to 7:00, the bulk of the activity commencing around 3:00 to 7:00. There's going to be a police flyover, there's going to be all kinds of great, beautiful things, and we want all of our residents to enjoy it. But more importantly, because it's the weekend before Memorial Day, we want to make sure our residents come to that event. So no going to Fisher Island, no going to Soho House, no going to the Standard. Sunday, May 19th is a Golden Beach beach day. Go to the beach during the morning and then be here in the afternoon. It's going to be one of the best activities you've ever had. Like Michael mentioned, it's bold to surprise. We even have a 50-foot-tall Ferris wheel that's going to be assembled in town for our residents to enjoy, and we want everyone there. So again, May 19th, big event. Make sure, be there or be square, the fair, Golden Beach.
Thank you, Michael. Okay, moving right along to item number E on the agenda, motion to set agenda, additions, deletions, removal from the items from the consent agenda, and changes to the agenda. I have none. Counsel?
None.
Staff?
None.
Perfect. Moving right along to item number F, good and welfare. Anyone speaking on good and welfare?
Yes, sir. Alex, 645 Golden Beach Drive.
Welcome.
Mayor, council.
Good to see you.
How are you? Quick item, it has to do with internet. Internet. Specifically, AT&amp;T. North of this strand, we still have 30-year-old technology, DSL. I had to switch, I'm now with the competitor, Atlantic, because I couldn't put up, it cannot keep up with the house. And we only two of us. Imagine people with kids in it. So I asked the council to tell the town manager or staff to look into it and see if we can put some pressure with AT&amp;T because it is ridiculous. I think south of this strand, U-birds might be available, or the things like, which is not that fast anymore, but I don't know if you are familiar with DSL, it's super slow. Okay? That's all. Thank you.
Very good point. So Alex, we need to look into that.
We have. It's a very, it's a very easy fix.
Imagine people with kids in it. So I asked the council to tell the town manager or staff to look into it and see if we can put some pressure with AT&amp;T because it is ridiculous. I think south of the strand, U-verse might be available, all those things like, which is not that fast anymore. But I don't know if you are familiar with DSL, it's super slow. Okay, that's all. Thank you.
Very good point, but, so, uh, Alex, we need to look into that.
We have, it's a very, it's a very easy fix. As soon as a resident orders fiber to the house and they pay for that line, everyone else will get it. It takes one resident to do it and the community gets it.
Say that again?
So fiber, fiber, if a resident requests fiber at their house, right? And they paid for that fiber run to go to their house, then everyone else along that trunk line could benefit from it. So AT&amp;T will put in fiber if there's a resident willing to pay for the trunk line for fiber. On the south side of town, we do have fiber because two of our residents personally paid for those fiber runs to go to their house because they run part of their businesses out of their houses, so they absorb that cost. So in order for fiber to be run to the north side of town, a, a homeowner needs to request it and pay for the, what they call a trunk line to go into the area. The town has asked, can we do it? Can we pay for that trunk line to be put in? Because we don't have what they call a demarcation point, a D-link point, we can't pay for it because we don't have any facilities that will require fiber to go to it.
What, what kind of expense are we looking at?
Thousands and thousands.
Thousands, $5,000?
Thirty to $40,000.
What about one family, like let's say the Peruses wanted to do it, what are we talking about?
Thirty to $40,000.
Oh, that, because they're not.
Councilman Einstein.
Because they're not, they're not the first.
And just in fairness to AT&amp;T, the same rule applies, in fairness to AT&amp;T, the same rule applies if you want Atlantic broadband fiber. So even though ABB is a little bit faster because it goes over your coax cable and they do have some fiber, but it's not the same trunk line fiber. If you request what they call a direct line from the ABB bank in Miami Beach to your home, they'll put it in with a tune of $55,000.
How much?
$55,000.
Atlantic broadband?
Because, because the longer run, their D-mark point is further.
Because the Peruses are not the first family that's called me in regards to this.
Now, we know, and, and, and Mr. Perus, thank you for bringing it to the council's attention because on ocean, we're having an even bigger issue. Forget the internet. We're having major, major issues in the 500 and 600 block as a release of telephone service with AT&amp;T on the ocean and we've been dealing with that now for two months. So it's, it's nothing that we're not aware of and it's something that we're pushing for, but we've looked at all the options.
Counsel, first, you'll look into it, because we do, it's a hundred, you're a hundred percent correct. I just find it hard to believe it's that expensive.
I, I already connected with Atlantic, which is much, much faster. There was no charge.
I have Atlantic, it's, it's pretty decent.
Yeah.
As compared to AT&amp;T fiber?
I don't have fiber, I have DSL.
No, I know.
It's through the phone line.
So the difference, I can explain that. So if you have a direct fiber link, your fiber's gonna be a lot faster, but because AT&amp;T, Atlanta broadband uses a coax cable to get into your home, you're gonna get up speeds of 40 and down speeds of 60, whereas fiber is up speeds of like 60 and down speeds of 180. So it's almost double because it's a fiber link versus a coax cable link.
I, I think you and I will talk about it further. Look, I, thank you for bringing it to your attention.
We have the conduit already there. We don't, that's why we put conduit in.
Not for Atlantic broadband, not for, not for AT&amp;T fiber, that's not something the town ever considered.
Alex, one just point of clarification, demarcation point would be so if...
A D-link at your home, so a point, a, a point of termination, a point of termination.
My question is, is that coming just starting from the south and going north?
It would be from, it would be from, so fiber you can't splice. So it'd be a, it would be from their D-mark point, wherever that trunk is, to the north side. The ones to the south side already has the splinters. So when they run fibers, they splint it, so you could, you can't cut it, but you could take splinters off of it to connect other homes. But you cannot do that unless you have a direct run to the north side. Again, we've explored all this with AT&amp;T in the past. That's how we know, that's what we have a little bit of working knowledge on how it works.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
No, sir.
Okay, moving right along, uh, next on the item, item number G, mayor's report. Uh, just a few little items. Councilman Bernstein, uh, a few quick little items. One is, uh, spring break was a big success. Thank you, Michael, and town staff for doing the special events for the kids in Golden Beach. I know it was, uh, it was attended by a lot of residents and I know everyone had a good time. Uh, it was great, great time. So thank you for your hard work. Second is, uh, tonight, we're gonna go over, uh, a little about the, uh, new town hall, what we have planned, where we are, and we're also gonna go over a timetable, what's gonna take place over the next three to four years on, on the project. Uh, I wanna tell all the residents that hurricane season is right around the corner and before we know it, we'll be in the middle of hurricane season, so please uh, start doing your preparation to your homes. If you're looking to, uh, add a generator, now's the time to do it. If you're looking to cut trees and stuff, now's the time to do it. Uh, hopefully, we've been fortunate over the last few years. Uh, hopefully this year, uh, we're not affected. So, uh, I can urge the residents, now's the time to do it, not, uh, three days before the storm hits. So, uh, some other things we're looking to do is, uh, we're looking at possibility resurfacing, uh, Golden Beach Drive. The 90th anniversary, I know the town staff has been working a long time, uh, on this project and I know it's gonna be a big success. So I can't urge you to put it in your calendar, plan on coming, bring family, bring friends. And, uh, like everything the town staff does, I know it's gonna be a, a big success. Uh, tonight, we're gonna go over the audit, uh, which I'm very pleased. Uh, last year, we had a savings of approximately $525,000 plus for 2018, which is a significant savings, uh, for the prior year and we'll go through that, uh, during the council meeting. Everything else, uh, again, summer's around the corner for the residents that are leaving for the summer. Uh, we'll miss ya and, uh, please get your residents, uh, prepared before you leave, so in case there is a, uh, catastrophic storm, uh, you are prepared. With that, I'll move to council comments. Start with, uh, Councilman Einstein, you have anything?
No.
Councilman Bernstein?
Um, I, I just...
Vice mayor.
A vice, a vice mayor, thank you. Excuse me, vice mayor.
Uh, I just, when...
Okay, thank you.
When I was running for reelection, one of the things that a lot of people brought up was just something to bring people together closer to Golden Beach. There's a lot of new residents in there. I just want to say that the town, I think, is doing great, uh, activities, going down to the beach, there's a painting class on the beach and I just want to encourage residents to be aware of these and to try to be advantageful. There's really great opportunities for new residents to meet. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Luskin?
Uh, just a few things. Um, I received a phone call from a resident that lives on A1A. Uh, there was a bicyclist on the sidewalk and it was early evening and as he was going by, he just opened every mailbox. Didn't take anything out of it, but all the mailbox doors were open. So I just think that's something, uh, we need to look, I probably should've called right after she called me about it, but you know, it seems to be happening more and more, so like I said, they didn't take anything out of it, but they just ride through the bike, open it, open it. Uh, a little shout out to, uh, Norman Galis, one of our residents. I think most of you probably read in the newsletter that, uh, he initiated the Norman B. Galis, uh, Foundation Award. He made a generous donation. And, uh, what was given out not long ago was the first Norman B. Galis Award to a deserving, uh, rheumatologist and, uh, I, it was really a very impressive evening and I, I think we probably should understand that uh, he along with many other of our physicians that live here really deserve kudos for at least what he did. Um, I was wondering if our police department carries Narcan or Naloxone in our vehicles?
So we, we've been trying to carry it now for...
I think we should.
Well, the problem is that we have to have a medical director who will sign off on our carrying and we've been trying to find a doctor that will serve as our medical director so we can carry it. Um, a lot of cities in the area are having that challenge, finding someone that will sponsor it, because you do, it doesn't need to be administered under the care of a medical director, but we are working on that. We have placed an order, they won't release it until we get an MD sign.
Okay, well, I, I know the fellow in Miami who does it through the University of Miami who coordinates it. So after the meeting, I'll give you the name and we'll put it together, but I think it's kind of important that we have that and it's not expensive.
No, it's not, and so do we, and we've actually been working on it for about a year and a half now and trying to get it to us.
I think I can hook you up with that doctor.
We'd love to talk to him.
Um, that also reminds me, I'm sure you also have the updated, I think we call them AEDs, the Automatic Exter, cause they're all so important. Those are the two things that I think every police car should have and probably one in town hall.
Not every police car, but we have them available too.
Well, at least one per shift, so if there's an issue, because time is of essence in that case.
We have it at the substation at the beach here in town hall and our supervisors carry it and, and three other cars.
I, I am fairly certain I can hook you up with that right person, Gio.
Thank you.
Um, uh, uh, another shout out to one of our officers, David Guzman. Um, I don't think a lot of us know that he got a frantic phone call from Astrid Friedlander and her family because their dog Harvey Friedlander fell into the canal and Officer Guzman was good enough to jump in the canal and save the dog's life. So, uh, kudos to him. Uh, I'm hoping, because you know I've been one of the people that's not in favor of the, uh, walkers that go through Golden Beach from the north end of town to the south. And I thought we were working on maybe putting a medical lock or something on there that it would at least make us a little bit more secure in terms of people coming back and forth.
Didn't, didn't Game of Thrones just start on Sunday?
What, what was that?
The White Walk.
Game of Thrones?
Got it, yes.
They're very nice people. They're definitely not like, they're not like the wildlings. Um...
We are working on that, though.
Okay. Uh, last, last but not least, and kudos to you, LaSette, but, and I don't know if I have my head screwed on right with this. When I get the agendas, a lot of times there is the agenda for the meeting. And then maybe the next day comes the final agenda for the meeting. And then what comes up after that is backup for the final agenda for the meeting. So what happens is, I wind up downloading like 15 things and I know there's only really one or two out of all of them. Is there a way that maybe you can add on to one of them? This replaces such and such a number and I can just delete it right out because I wind up downloading and I read them all and they just become redundant and I, I'm never sure which one I'm reading after a while, so I appreciate that.
Usually the last one is the right one.
Uh, and I think that's it.
Ex-vice mayor, Mandel?
Thank you, uh, yeah, just a couple of quick things. Uh, I know the chief, Downey, isn't here, but I wanted to thank him and the 2,000 firefighters that we have here in Miami Bay uh, for their service as well as, uh, FOP. I know, uh, David left, but the FOP, all the members of the lodge, uh, 119. Um, also, LaSette, congratulations.
Thank you.
And, uh, I just wanted to say, Michael, you guys have been doing a great job. I've been hearing great things, especially about the movie nights. Even though I got some, uh, detractors over there, I think they turned out very well. Um, and lastly, just so the residents know, uh, the town council and the town administration have, uh, always worked hard to try to leverage their relationship, uh, the mayor, the town manager, as well as institutional knowledge that really the town manager has in Tallahassee to try to get, uh, state grants whenever possible. Uh, we were there last week or two weeks ago. Uh, we're looking to get a few grants for a few of our upcoming projects. Uh, I, I mentioned this because, uh, we met with many, uh, senators and representatives. But I just want the residents to know that our representative, Representative Geller, as well as Senator Pizzo have been great supporters of ours and they're trying to, they're really moving our projects along, so just wanted to let everyone, give everyone an update on that.
I want to thank you for going to Tallahassee, representing town of Golden Beach. The town manager and I were unable to go, I was out of town. He was out of town, but I know you did a great job in Tallahassee and appreciate you going up and, uh, representing the town and, and putting up your, your effort in securing funding for us, so thank you, great job. Okay, with that, I'll move to the town manager report.
Mayor, I'll try to keep it brief. I think this evening I, I've spoken enough, but a couple of just highlights for the residents to, to keep in mind. Um, we have over 67, we have 67 events that were planned this year and participation on some of them are very low. Participation on some of them are very high. And so what we'd like to do is try to get an average participation by our, by our residents. On the town's website and in every newsletter, all of our events are listed there, dates and times and locations. Some of our events are tailored for children, some of our events are tailored for adults only. So we, we've heard your concerns, we've heard your, your feedback. You wanted amenities like yoga, boot camp, tennis camp, um, painting with wine, painting without wine, painting with crayons.
Just wine.
So, so we have, we have at a minimum, any month of, any month of the year, we have at a minimum five events. Sometimes there are as many as 12 events. So please look at the town's website, read your newsletter when they arise and try to participate in as many events as you possibly can. We have the upcoming luau, it's coming up. Make sure that you participate in that event that is scheduled on 28th of this month at the Beach Pavilion, so may, please put that on your calendar. That is a precursor to our 90th celebration and we've already gone through that, through the item. I'd like to thank the resident services department and Marie Tally for always trying to keep that information on our website and in the newsletter. So just, when in doubt, call town hall and ask for Michael. So Michael, thank you for, and your team. Uh, kudos to the police department. We had our mock assessment last week. We only had a couple of things that were, that were criticized. We'll make sure that, for, before the full assessment that we'll pass, but chief, you did a great job with that. Councilman Rojas, I know that you're watching from home tonight. I do want to give you a canal maintenance update. So we did have derm divers in town just the other day. And what we found is that because it is growing season, we do have new grasses, which has now forced us to change our permit application for the 10th time. So where we stand today, we are going to eliminate from our design criteria any, uh, any areas that have sea grass with the hope that when we dredge the areas around it, that will just slip away. So we are in the final stages of applying for our final permit for dredging. We hope to get it issued by the end of this quarter. If not, um, we're gonna probably seek legal help to get some more traction there because derm has had a change in leadership and every time derm changes leadership, there are new criterias placed on the town. So don't think that we're not working on canal maintenance. We are working on canal maintenance. It's just a very big bureaucracy that we're working on, so, working with, so just keep that in mind. Uh, councillor, councillor member Luskin, you're correct. On the agenda, a lot of times, and this is important for our residents, because when you get the e-blast online, um, sometimes our agenda is broken up into multiple sections because it's too large of a file to send. Um, it's always, uh, helpful if you go to the town's website, that is the most current version of the agenda. It's always gonna be found. So when in doubt, visit our website. Um, that's where the, and, and some agendas may have five or six attachments because the files are too big, so just keep that in mind. Um, also, as the mayor mentioned, um, this year, unfortunately, I was unable to travel the day days. Uh, but I will say that Councilman Mandel did a phenomenal job representing us and I'm pleased to announce that we've had language in both the House and the Senate, which we were hoping we would get, but we did get it. We have language in both the House and the Senate appropriations bills for our canal, excuse me, for our stormwater pump station on Center Island. And we have language in the House, not yet the Senate, for our town hall EOC bunker. Our priority clearly is the stormwater pump station on Center Island, so we're gonna aggressively work with our members to get that language appropriated. It is gonna be a difficult appropriation year. The state budget is very tight this year. The governor has new priorities. Governor DeSantis has other priorities than, than pork projects, but hopefully we'll see something there. And last and finally, congratulations to LaSette and thank you to the staff for all the hard work that you've done over the last month. Uh, we have a loaded agenda at the end of the meeting, so I'll keep all the rest of my comments for that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Town attorney?
Great, nothing.
Okay, moving right along to item number K, ordinances second reading. An ordinance to the town council amending chapter 66 of the town code related to the building height measurement and the house garage floor elevation and swale grade elevations.
In ordinance of the town of Golden Beach, Florida, amending the town's code of ordinances related to district regulations, amending chapter 66 entitled zoning, amending section 66 dash 69.2 and 66 dash 69.3 related to building height measurement, amending section 66 dash 101 relating to house and garage floor elevations, amending section 66 dash 102 relating to minimum lot and swale elevations, providing for severability, providing for codification and providing an effective date.
Okay, I need a motion to approve?
Motion.
Need a second?
Second.
Okay, uh, town manager?
Mayor, council, as you remember from first reading, so what this ordinance is doing is cleaning up an ordinance that we worked on last year. Um, it's setting the proper, uh, elevations for all the homes and, and undersized lots. It also requires new drainage in all driveways, so all driveways on a moving forebass will be required to have an inline drainage system to capture any runoff that's covering, covering off the driveways into the town's right of way. There are no changes between first reading and second reading. Mayor, before we move on. Also, last announcement, tomorrow is the Center Island meeting. We with the police on Center Island Bridge and it begins at 7:00 PM.
Thank you. Okay, any comments from the council? Any council, uh, close, the council, any public couns, co, comments, excuse me? Okay, roll call, please. Oh, yeah, sir.
You like, what you said about what is going on with the residents? Are you gonna force houses that are built to do something about it or, or the drainage?
Yes, so on, on a moving fore basis, any home that does any improvement is about 50% of the value or all new homes. When putting in a driveway, you're now gonna be required to have an inline driveway drainage, so any water that slips from your driveway into the town's right of way goes into your drainage system and stays on your property. The town's current code requires that any water that falls on your property stay on your property. What we're seeing with all new driveways or driveways that are repaired, those driveways are just continuing to have the runoff coming to the town's right of way. A clear violation of the town code. What this code does, it says, you're now required to put an inline, an in-driveway drain to capture your runoff and keep your water on your property. So this is a new requirement.
Any other comments?
Just real quick, A1A, same thing?
Yep, all properties.
So, let me ask you a question. On days where we have torrential rains or a hurricane and... So, let me ask you a question, on days where we have torrential rains or a hurricane, and you know you slowly see it coming up?
It won't capture all of it.
Okay, so...
Not even close.
It'll, it'll mitigate what comes onto the town's right-of-way, but remember...
Well, I'm just wondering if it would prevent it from getting closer and closer to the front door, it won't have anything to do with that?
It, it depends on your capacity of your, of your own system on your property, but I'd like to remind, especially the, the council member who's returning, your code requires that any water that falls on your property stay on your property, whether it's on ocean or inside a town. And so what we see, especially with all the new elevations, is there's a lot of runoff, and especially going into, especially on ocean, where it's going into, into, onto Ocean Boulevard. So, the requirement is that if water's coming off of your driveway, it goes into your own water system, and you deal with the treatment and the discharge of that water, and not to add those volumes of water into the town's system that can over capa- oh, create an overcapacity in our own systems.
The problem we've had also is on Golden Beach Drive, a lot of the newer homes, as you notice, the driveways are up. So what happened when it would pour rain, the water would run down the driveway, go into the right-of-way, and then if the next-door neighbor homes were lower, it would go into their yards, and their code requires that their water stays in, in your property.
Oftentimes it runs from side to side too on those newer homes, but that we could, those are the retaining walls.
Those are what the retaining walls are supposed to do for, correct.
Okay.
Uh, close, any other public comments? Close the public, close the council, roll call, please.
Mayor Singer?
Yes?
Vice Mayor Bernstein?
Yes.
Councilmember Luskin?
Yes.
Councilmember Mandell?
Yes.
Councilmember Einstein?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, moving, uh, along, item number L, ordinance is first reading, there are none. Item number N, Quajah Resurrection Resolution. Item number M two, a resolution of Town Council approving a variance request for six fifty Golden Beach Drive for a tennis court, retractable fence system, and red clay tennis court material.
A resolution of the town of Golden Beach, Florida, authorizing and approving, approving, uh, various requests for the property located at six fifty Golden Beach Drive, Golden Beach, Florida, three three one six zero. Number one, to permit a tennis court to be set back five feet from the front yard property line, property line, and zero feet from the side property line, instead of the twenty-five feet from the front property line and ten feet from the side property line as required by the code. Number two, to permit a retractable fence system instead of the minimum ten-foot-high black or green permanent vinyl clad fence. Number three, to allow for a red clay tennis court material to count toward the pervious area calculation at the same rate of calculation as pervious paver, pervious pavers are permitted. A rate of not more than a fifty percent credit toward the pervious area calculation.
Okay, before we get started, anyone that's gonna speak on this, uh, Quajah Resurrection Resolution, please stand and face the, uh, Town Clerk. And anyone that's gonna speak?
Please raise your...
Raise your right hand, please. Repeat after the Town Clerk.
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
I do. Thank you. Need a motion.
So with that, any motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Need a second?
Second.
Okay.
Mayor, I'm gonna help this, I'm gonna help this item along a little bit. So we do have the owner in the audience, if you guys can just stand up and wave. The owners, they're currently living on North Parkway, they bought six fifty, uh, Golden Beach Drive, let's get the rent screens up, if you have them. Um, they bought six fifty Golden Beach Drive, which is the old Guarino House. As you know, the current Guarino House has an existing tennis court area that, that was there. So, so what this...
The weekend?
What, what this homeowner has asked, what this homeowner has asked is to try to, ask permission to keep the existing area that was designated as a tennis court, so they can have the enjoyment of the tennis court and still be able to build the house to suit the needs of, of their family. What the town administration did in talking with some of the members of the council, to try to find a win-win, is that if we were to allow them to keep, let's turn the boards, that's the...
A little bit different.
Yeah. What we, what we tried to do in order to find a win-win, to allow them to keep an existing non-conforming use amenity in the front of the property, we, the administration, have asked for some consideration, totally up for the council to decide whether they wanna grant it. So right now, that tennis court area has a zero front, zero side setback, it literally sits on the property line. What we feel would be appropriate is if we ask for a five-foot buffer on the front, so we can provide for dense shrubs to cover the court from being seen from the street. On the side, we don't mind the zero setback because it abuts a driveway, does not abut a building, right? So on the side, we're okay with the zero, but we're not okay with the front with the zero because we want some buffer. In addition, your code requires a ten-foot-high permanent fence around the tennis court. We feel that that would make the community look like there's a big kennel area on this property. So, the administration did some research, and so did the property owner, we found that there is a retractable fence system, not a permanent fence system. The fence would be erected during the times that the tennis games are being, or the tennis practice is being done by the family. The fence would then come down when there is no tennis being played. We feel that that is a very good accommodation to have, not have that structure there. And in addition, your code only allows for pervious pavers as pervious material. This particular property is looking for a clay court, they had found a volcanic clay material that meets our pervious area calculations and would probably be better than. One of the conditions in allowing the pervious pavers is the Building Advisory Board, as a condition of approval, is requiring that they have drainage along the entire tennis area, not just the front or the back, they want drainage around the entire tennis area to capture any water that may run off. In addition to that, as you know, all of our recreational facilities are allowed to have permanent lighting. This structure will not have lighting, it'll have low-level lights, so perimeter lights around the tennis court, but it won't have those elevated lights that then blind the neighbors because of the location. And so there's a small video that we'd like to play, and I'm...
Does the tennis court get, have a watering system underneath?
So this video shows how, what it would look like from the curb, you won't even tell that there's a, that there's a tennis court there, 'cause all the shrubs that we're putting in the front. Go ahead, you guys can speak.
Does anyone answer the question? Does the tennis court have a watering system underneath? It's a clay court?
Yeah, it's a clay court.
Does it have a watering?
Yeah, you weren't sworn in, so you can't speak, so if you're gonna speak, you need to be sworn in. Let's wear him in.
It doesn't need a watering?
Oh, it doesn't need, I was just wondering.
Okay, so as you could tell from the video, we wanna provide enough, enough landscaping to keep the tennis court from being seen from the road.
Some of the landscaping is substantially existing. So, on the curb side. Real quick question, when you said that, um, on the north side of that property...
It abuts the driveway.
When you said zero setback...
It currently sits at a zero setback, so it sits currently on the property line, up to the fence.
It's basically where it is now.
And we're recommending to keep it there.
I'm talking, I'm talking about the side setback.
That's correct, it's currently at zero.
So it's, there's no ten-feet buffer?
Not currently, that, if you look at, if you look at your supporting documents...
Yeah, I don't, I have one, but it's, I just love it along the two-lane.
So here's, so if you look at the current, and I know that this is dated, but if you look at where the current Guarino tennis court was, it went right up to the property line, and they're asking to do the same thing, and we're not opposed to that because on the opposite side of that, of that tennis court is where the driveway for the nor- house to the north is. If we were to push it ten feet, if we were to push it, if we were to push it further back, then we may have a, a tennis court where somebody's bedroom window may be. And so we're recommending to keep it at zero on the, on the side, and keep it at five in the front, so we don't push it back.
Can I just ask you one quick, tell me again the difference between these lights and the lights of another tennis court?
So, typically you have the mast pole with the, with the lights, that shine down.
Your lights are not, uh, obstrusive to anyone else?
Because his is on the side of his house, because this tennis court is on the front of the house and not on the side of the house, one of the...
Down?
Well, no, these are gonna be low-level lights.
Not gonna have light.
They're not gonna have the tall lights that come up. On, on the, on the retractable fence, they may have spotlights that they can use, but those are not permanent. So you're not gonna have those permanent ugly structures facing the tennis court.
Right, but they can still play tennis in the evening.
They'll have, they'll have proper lighting to be able to do practices and stuff like that, correct.
On the, on the side setback, is that a retractable fence?
Yes.
That's also a retractable fence?
Yes.
North End Street. North End Street.
The north end.
The net is retractable.
Correct.
The net?
And the street ground.
Yes.
Uh, you saying fence, you're saying net.
It's same thing, it's a, it's a material, so, so...
It's not the same thing, the net, the fence goes around the property, the net's in the middle.
I know, so the, the ma- the material of the fence is a netting.
Oh, oh.
It's a netting, so, and we're indifferent to that because what we don't want is for there to be a permanent box around this structure. So that goes up...
Oh, it is a net.
Yeah, so that the balls don't go out and hit people's cars or the street, but then it goes down when it's not in use.
How does it go up, electronic?
It's a, it's a... But get a code violation for not following the spirit of what the, of what, of what the variances. So when it's time to play, they pull up the net, they play in the net, and they're done, they take it down, so whoever's playing needs to have the burden of putting the net up and putting the net down, so that it's not permanently there as an eyesore to the neighbors.
And, and the net goes all around the court, right? But he keeps saying no.
Uh, sorry, I thought it was on the...
It's a, it's a condition, it's a condition of approval, it has to go around the entire, we don't, now, on the side of the home, that's up to them, but on our three sides, it's required.
But you gotta put a net up there too, right?
That's a condition, that's a condition of the approval, if, if they don't wanna, if they don't wanna net on the side that breaks their window, that's completely up to them. Anything where we're gonna have liability, so on the, on the north, south, and east side, it requires the netting. If they don't do it, they don't get the permanent court.
Right, if you go by there now, there's an existing tennis court.
That's correct.
So it's, yeah, so all they're doing...
Been there for years.
Yeah, all they're doing is replacing it in a beautiful home.
You would probably want the net around the whole court.
Oh, yeah, we're going around the whole, otherwise... You're chasing balls.
You're chasing balls, exactly.
How high is the trees in front of the net on the frontage property?
So we, so we're only requiring, now, what they do landscaping was a separate, they're gonna help out on a second, what the town is requiring, because the net is retractable and it's not permanent, we're not requiring trees to hide that, what we're requiring is shrubs to hide the court from when you're driving, so when you're driving, you don't, you're not seeing, right now you drive by there, you see the entire, you see the court. We ask for, we required a five-foot buffer so you don't see the court when you're driving by or when you're walking your dogs. As it relates to the netting going up and down, we don't necessarily want trees to cover it. We believe, and we had this conversation earlier in my office, we believe that to be able to appreciate the house is more valuable to the community than having trees mask the house, that's our position as the administration.
I think you did a good job doing it with, uh, mask, I think the tennis net is a great idea, I mean, the, uh, retractable tennis fence. So, I got no problem with it.
I think it's beautiful.
And the rest of the house requires no variances, the rest of the house is being built conforming to the town's code, and, uh, they've hired an excellent architect and excellent owner, Dr., um, we normally would not support this type of an item because if anywhere else in the community, this would not be something that would fit into the community. If you look at the north side of town, there are five other recreational amenities that do not conform to your code. If you look at, uh, Mr. Rodriguez's house, his pool's on the side of the house, not in the back of the house, the old Russian's house. Um, the, the Russians' house has a tennis court on the side, a member next to the empty lot, and the gentleman next to Councilman Luskin's house, his pool is half on one lot, half on the other lot. So all the recreational amenities on the north side of town are non-conforming amenities. This is just allowing them to continue the, the benefit of this non-conforming amenity to be allowed.
It's been there for years.
Right, right, doesn't bother you. Any other comments, council?
Always, always to the public.
Wait, let me do the council first.
Yeah, I just, I have one, if, if I'm, beautiful house, and great solution to have the fence go, but if I'm at the house, since it's a zero lot line, and I'm at the house on the north, um, I'm just curious what your landscape is, and that's part of it, because if I'm your neighbor, as, as happy as I am that you have a tennis court, I don't necessarily want to see it the whole time, and I just wasn't sure what you're doing on the landscaping on that side.
Uh, we actually, we have a landscape plan of that area. Uh, right now we're showing a cujia hedge, hedge mixed with some palms. Um, and also it gets, it's the zero lot line right here, but, you know, at this point it's nine feet. So it does get, there's only a small portion that we're adding.
Yes, is that an angle?
Yeah, the, the lot lines at an angle.
There used to be some very tall hedges or trees there at one time.
Town Attorney? Uh, I've represented the applicant in the past, and I just, from a conflict situation, I just wanna announce it, I don't represent him. I didn't represent him in the purchase of the house, I haven't represented him in the application, but I have represented him in the past.
It's not a conflict.
Well, yeah, but I wanted to disclose it.
No, it's good.
No, um, I'm glad you disclosed it, I, I, I don't think it's a conflict under.
So I made them?
Yes.
Any other council comments?
Yeah, just to, uh, the Vice Mayor's question, so the hedges and the palm, I guess, uh, on the north side, how high do they go?
There are prob- cujias can grow very high, but, and I'm sure they'll keep on trimmed at, you know, seven feet.
Okay, just considering, as the Vice Mayor said, a zero setback there, this, the noise, I guess, that would cancel out some of the noise coming from the tennis court.
Are, are, um, Town Council members who are formerly excellent, uh, clay court players, uh, allowed to use this tennis court? That would definitely be known for it.
Not you.
Glenn is a good, uh, hard court tennis, I think he, he used it, what, twice in twenty years?
Any other council comments?
Yeah, and just, I don't see in the, in the variance, at least in the summary of the variance, uh, the exception of the low, level lighting.
We wouldn't put it in the variance, it's just not something that we're gonna permit, so, because it's not an exception. So there's two things, if the, the BRAB is requiring the drainage system that's not in the variance, that is a condition of us issuing the permit, and another condition of issuing the permit is the lighting system that we still have to approve.
All right, other than that, I have...
But that wouldn't be listed in the variance because it's not an exception.
By the way, it's a beautiful house.
Councilman Poroche has a question.
As much as, did you guys know I live right across the proposed, uh, tennis court and house? I'm not going to oppose if you decide to approve the variance, but if you approve the variance, please approve the collapsible fence, because I don't wanna look at a ten-foot fence coming out of my house every single day. The landscape, it was proposed at four feet high, it sounded low, I think six feet would have been better.
I believe they wanna hide it also, sure.
Yeah, but from my, from my porch, I will see the tennis court at four feet high, because I'm pretty high.
We could adjust it.
The other thing is there's no time of operation in the code.
Yes, there is.
Well, that's what Lynn has all...
Yeah, there is, at eleven o'clock.
Yes.
Eleven o'clock. That's a pretty long day. We're not likely to be able to play, is that really that, that good playing, playing tennis?
That's the clay court?
That's not just for this applicant, all of our recreational facilities in town have the right to use their recreational facilities up to seven PM, that's in our current code, so you're allowed to be on your basketball court, your tennis court, um...
Seven?
Eleven, eleven, eleven.
You said seven.
Sorry, eleven, eleven PM, and if you be, and if, even your pool area, if you become too loud after eleven o'clock, we can close that recreational amenity because you're exceeding the rights to use that recreational amenity past eleven PM.
Okay, any other comments?
Well, I think that was, that was it, I just...
Thank you, any other public comments? Uh, we'll take that to vote, please.
Mayor Singer?
Yes?
Vice Mayor Bernstein?
Yes.
Councilmember Luskin?
Yes.
Councilmember Mandell?
Yes.
Councilmember Einstein?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Congratulations, good luck with your house?
Start building, Einstein.
That house started and then stopped and then started, and, beautiful home. I'm almost right across the street from it, six, six, five, across, almost across the street. You too, good luck, and welcome.
Okay, guys, we need to keep moving? Please, attention.
Congratulations.
Thank you, good luck. Beautiful home. Welcome to Golden Beach. Moving right along. Moving right along to the consent agenda, the following items are on the consent agenda. Item number N three, official minutes of the January twenty-second, two thousand and nineteen executive session. Item number N four, official minutes of the February twenty-seventh, two hundred and nineteen, two thousand and nineteen Local Planning Agency hearing. Item number N five, official minutes of the February twenty-seventh, two thousand and nineteen, special Town Council meeting. Excuse me, item number N six, a resolution of Town Council approving a member of the Town of Golden Beach Regulatory Advisory Board. Item number N seven, a resolution of Town Council authorizing a payment of twelve hundred dollars to Women's Breast and Heart Initiative. Item number L eight, N eight, a resolution of the Town Council amending an error on Resolution two five seven five point one eight authorizing the donation of six surplus police vehicles. Those number three, four, five, six, seven, and eight are on the consent agenda. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Anyone disapprove? Anyone disapprove items uh consent agenda uh pass thank you item number O. Uh town resolution a resolution of town council accepting the general purpose financial statements and single audit for the fiscal year. Two thousand seventeen and two thousand eighteen.
A resolution of the town council of the town of Golden Beach Florida accepting the general purpose financial statements and the single audit for fiscal year. Two thousand seventeen two thousand eighteen ending September thirtieth two thousand eighteen prepared by Keith McCullough and company LLP and providing for an effective date.
Okay uh you have a motion to approve?
Motion.
Any second?
Second.
Okay these are the audited financial statements from the uh auditors they had no findings or recommendations so once again. This is the fifth year in a row that the auditors have uh had found uh no errors or no problems. My hat's off to Maria the finance department and Raquel she's doing a great job and town staff putting together uh the financial statements and assisting the auditors. The uh fund balance uh increased by five hundred and twenty five thousand nine hundred and twenty eight thousand. The year end two thousand and eighteen general fund balance prior to any adjustments is five million one hundred and two thousand and forty seven dollars. The total government fund balance is two million two two hundred and thirty eight thousand one hundred and sixty four. Uh and we're gonna talk about is there gonna be a write off we'll talk about that in the next uh item. Uh again the importance uh showed there were no deficiencies in our policies and our our uh policies and our practices. Uh again we saw an increase of a half million dollars and we're still waiting on three hundred ninety one thousand seven hundred and twenty one dollars. In Irma related costs.
Four hundred and forty five thousand three hundred and two.
What?
Oh we're still waiting on.
No three hundred ninety one thousand we're waiting on.
Four hundred and forty five thousand three hundred and two is our new updated number.
New updated and just so everyone knows because people have asked me in the beginning Irma probably will end up costing the town and Alex you could correct me. But I I think almost six hundred thousand dollars.
Five hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah five over five hundred thousand dollars that was the impact that's unreversible for the town of Golden Beach so that's.
Unreversible so in total we spent almost a million dollars on.
Million two.
Right but we're getting reversed for half there.
Some insurance some some FEMA.
So uh anything else you have to add on the financials town manager? Okay once again my hat's off to the finance department great job.
Mayor before you take a vote because it applies it applies to the prior item and I just wanna put in the record because I just went out and made it clear to the resident. The fencing system for that variance and I made it clear to them they alluded this evening that the post stay up and they pull up the net. That is not what the BRAB and it's not what the administration asked for and I made it very clear to them that the condition of the variance approval was based on. The fencing system that we recommended the fence fencing system the administration recommended is a system where the posts collapse. And the net comes up with the post when the posts go up the system that they were explaining to you this evening are posts that are permanent and they pull up a net that is not. What is allowed your approval was for a a retractable collapsible netting system that erects.
She made it clear?
I made it clear outside I wanna put it into the record in case there's any doubt but the council approved a collapsible retractable fence. Not a fence that allows the post to be up permanently and the net to come up and down. If they cannot meet that condition the variance will not be we won't approve the permits for that fence.
And they crank it themselves.
How it how it goes up.
Isn't that what they said?
Well there's hydraulics or whatever but but I was a little bit surprised when he was talking about a crank because a crank means that a crank means that there's a permanent post that's not what's approved so. For the record it is a a collapsible fencing system they tried to pull a fast one but I caught it that's why I ran out I apologize for not being in the room when you guys when you guys started this item.
Thank you moving right along.
That's the way you explained when I discussed it with you.
That's that's what it is.
No item number nine yeah you uh roll call on item number nine the audited financial statement does I'm sorry did anyone have any questions?
No.
No any count public time no okay roll call please.
Mayor Singer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bernstein?
Yes.
Councilmember Luskin?
Yes.
Councilmember Mendel?
Yes.
Councilmember Einstein?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Item number O ten a resolution of town council accepting the transfer funds into the general fund.
A resolution of the town council of the town of Golden Beach Florida authorizing and approving the transfer of. Two million five hundred and eighty eight thousand and twenty one dollars in the town's capital improvement fund and. Five hundred and sixty two thousand six hundred and ninety seven dollars in the bridge fund to the general fund and approving the transfer of five hundred and twenty six thousand four hundred and one dollars. From the debt service fund to the general fund providing for implementation and providing for an effective date.
You have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Any second?
Second.
Hey Alex I'm gonna let you uh go over and explain the transfers.
So mayor so what we're trying to do is we're trying to clean up the financials for next year's audit that kind of click gives a clear indication exactly where we stand financially. And so as you know with governmental funding your your funds are allowed to collect debt and you're allowed to collect receivables against those debts if there's a possibility for receivable to come in. When we started a CIP project and when we started the bridge fund we always knew that the general fund reserves would be used. That pay for capital projects in both your general and your CIP fund and in your bridge fund we've carried those receivables on our books for many years. Just to keep our numbers true but now that we're starting a new mass civic center master plan it's time for us to really look at our financial positioning. So here's what I'm asking for knowing that we will never assess our homeowners for the money that was spent for the CIP. And there are no other revenues that can be collected against that two point five million dollar number. I'm asking you to transfer that back to the general fund which is basically writing off that number okay? And because we're never gonna erect tolls in Golden Beach to create collect a bridge toll to also transfer back the five hundred sixty two thousand dollars to the general fund. Writing off in essence or closing out those two receivables I'm not asking you to do that in the LETF fund. Because the LETF fund does receive revenues from the state and for forfeited assets we wanna keep that on our books as a receivable. And as you know during the last three years we have overfunded our debt service fund because of the debt service payment savings. And so it's time to transfer that money out of the debt service fund and put it where rightfully belongs which is our general fund. That means that we will have two point two million dollars in our total both government and general fund fund balance. This is what's important for you and for the community to understand of that two point two million dollars one point six million dollars is due to us. From the stormwater fund that is a receivable that we intend to collect over time from our residents. That one point six million dollars you're currently paying down and it currently it it both comes down and increases last year had eighty eight thousand dollars worth of expenses. That we borrowed from the general fund so as your stormwater fee comes in you're hopefully gonna be paying down that one point six million dollars. Because there is a revenue stream for that one point six million dollars we're not asking you to write it off but that is not cash on hands. Cash on hands for our fund balance we have five hundred and forty five thousand dollars. We anticipate an additional four hundred and forty five thousand dollars coming in from the FEMA money that's owed to us from from Irma setting your fund balance at nine hundred and ninety one thousand. It is a very critical number because it is a low number and as the mayor just indicated if we were to get hit by another storm. There could be another potential deficit of five hundred thousand dollars to hit that number we're praying that there are no storms this year right? In most governments you some cities have zero percentage of their budgets most cities have twenty percent. So most cities will allocate twenty percent of their operating budget as a as a positive reserve if we were to use that same number. Our twenty percent reserves would mean that we would need one point eight million dollars cash on hand to have a truly funded reserve of twenty percent. Even though we have a two point two million dollar reserve that two point two million dollars is not cash on hands so what we're asking is two things. One that we write offs what we need to write off so that we can get to the right numbers and two let us work towards building your reserves to get to that one point eight in true cash on hands. That we need it is also important for our residents to know in your current budget in your current budget. You currently have close to six hundred thousand dollars that is not allocated has nowhere to be spent. That is staying there for our capital projects civic center and other projects that will help grow your fund balance number. So when you hear the mayor's talk about five hundred dollar cost of Irma we in addition to that six hundred thousand dollars that's not allocated to any projects. We also have two hundred and thirty thousand dollars set aside for unrelated storm events in our five nineteen fund. So we are financially doing very well we just wanna get to a stronger positioning financially as we move forward the discussion on civic center. We strongly urge that you approve this item favorably thank you.
Well there there's no doubt we should to be financially prudent we need to make the adjustments because otherwise the uh fund balance is is a little misleading.
Is overstated.
Right so uh it's not whether we should approve we have to approve you got you gotta prove it because otherwise the fund balance is not correct any questions?
Yeah I I'm sorry Alex and I know we were getting into this when we had a stop our meeting before you're so you're. I'm looking at a piece of paper that um Alex the town council basically describing that we should be having. Twenty percent of our general budget of approximately one point eight million dollars um available for um different emergencies like another hurricane and different things. If we if we go in there and use this for town hall. How much how much of this money are we gonna be reducing with the town hall?
So we haven't pledged any of our fund balance number towards this town hall so in this year's budget there's six hundred thousand plus or minus six hundred thousand dollars for civic center or any project that the council wishes to look at. And in October we start our new fiscal year and they'll probably be about the same amount of money about six hundred thousand dollars in that budget for the civic center and if you. Well later on when we discuss this in the center we're not looking to break ground on civic center anytime be before July of next year right? So we believe that that we have always talked about funding town hall in this in the current way. Two point five million dollars from a loan that we would take on that we have enough debt capacity in our budget to cover.
Cover the debt service.
And that would come off our avalorum taxes.
No you I cannot pledge avalorum dollars because that requires a vote.
Come out of the operating.
We have enough non avalorum revenues that we can pledge towards a note that does not require a bond referendum or approval. To take on an additional debt of two point five million dollars well how do we know we have that numbers it's very simple remember the lots that we had to carry? Those dollars are still there so we had the capacity to carry the lots we have the capacity to carry that note. We could probably push it to three but I would not feel comfortable with three I only feel comfortable with taking on two point five in additional debt. In addition to that two point five we know that there's six hundred thousand in this year's budget and there's gonna be at least six hundred thousand dollars next year's budget that gives us one point two right? So now we're at we're at three point seven in new money right? In addition to that we currently have in our drug enforced in our in our forfeited assets pipeline approximately three point two million dollars of which. We're only pledging two million dollars towards the building of a new civic center so two million plus the three point seven that gets us the five point seven. However we're telling all of our bidders if we decide to move forward we want a facility that's only built to five point two that gives us a five hundred thousand dollar cushion. That's how we plan to fund it that's how we continue.
It's not affecting the fund the current fund.
And that's how we're continuing to hopefully grow your fund balance just like we proved last year last year we had an operating savings of five hundred thousand there has only been one year. In the twelve years that I've been your manager there's only been one year where we did not save more than four hundred thousand dollars in operating savings on any given year. That's how you've been able to do all the capital projects that you've done because every year I tighten the boat you know I I don't replace boat engines faster I don't replace car fasters. We try to save as much money on on every given year except for one year we fell underneath that four hundred thousand threshold. This year we will have at least at a minimum four hundred thousand dollars in savings to grow that fund balance so that'll take that nine hundred thousand to closer to one point three. Which gets gets it closer to one point eight most cities is not cash on hand is 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 receivables in the fund balance. We meet that objective we have two point two million dollars in our fund balance receivables. I just feel as your manager we should have one point eight cash on hand.
And the other thing is also we're looking for outside funding too from Tallahassee or federal government to assist us to add to that five point three million dollars.
The only thing that concerns me is when you say receivable the stormwater department makes up.
One point six of it.
One point six of it and. So that would be about a ten year payoff based on our current.
Based on our current plan it seems like a hundred year payoff so because because and I and I and I don't mean.
Right I use six thousand I'm sorry it's six hundred I'm sorry so right.
Yeah so so currently your stormwater fee. Has generated about nineteen thousand dollars a year towards paying down your loan from the general fund. However in years like last year when we had five stormwater line breaks and the stormwater fund did not have enough money to fix those breaks. The general fund lent again to the stormwater fund eighty eight thousand dollars to make those improvements. Because the stormwater fund did not have enough money to fix those pipes that were broken. So the money that was allocated to pay down your debt didn't get used to pay down your debt in fact your debt grew last year and that's fine because. At some point when we're ready when the administration is ready to determine what we're gonna do with that receivable. We either will increase the stormwater fee or as councilmember Mendel alluded to earlier maybe we get rid of the administrative costs that we charge the stormwater. The administration currently charges a stormwater an administrative fee to manage the stormwater system. In most cities there would be a complete different staff that manages the stormwater system there would be a director of stormwater facilities and staff to do all the fixing right? In Golden Beach we don't hire staff we just add that as another responsibility to the manager another responsibility to public works another responsibility to finance. We do charge the stormwater system a fee to manage the system for it so there are a lot of creative things that we could explore explore in the future. As of today residents here's what we're asking we're not asking today for a rate increase on a stormwater fee. We're saying we're gonna keep that on our books as a collectible later on we could have a very honest and candid discussion as to how we can collect that money faster if we choose to do so. We're asking you to write off what we're asking you to write off and feel comfortable that we feel the mayor and I both feel very comfortable with with our financial positioning as it stands today. We have enough money in our current budget and we have enough money in our current reserves to get us through anything that may occur and we have a proper. Uh financial plan in place as it relates to our projects moving forward. There are two additional projects that the mayor alluded to this evening that we'll talk about at the end of the meeting that will probably. Take away from from our ability to move forward other projects but we'll talk about that later everything that the community wants done comes at a cost. The question has always been what do we prolong or how do we become creative? Or how do we sell ourselves to get more money from the feds I remind the community we've brought in thirty million dollars in free money to this city over the last twelve years. Thirty million dollars of free money to the city we'll continue the work to get to the objective but it's. The belt has become tighter and tighter and this is this is the right time to do this. In order for us to move forward with the civic sever master plan in the right direction it's time for us to get our financial house in order and this is what it this is what it will take tonight.
Any other questions?
Uh yeah just a quick thing I well I I understand and I agree with the cleaning up that we're doing here it makes perfect sense. Just question regarding the transferring the funds from debt fund to general fund I understand why we're doing that just out of curiosity the the refinance that was done uh. The municipal bond refinance that was done when do those savings end because from what I remember.
This is fear.
So we're not gonna see those five hundred or this year I guess.
So what's gonna happen is that excellent question council member at the end of this budget you'll do one more transfer. So we do have we'd have the last of the savings in this.
In this budget which we.
Into the debt service fund so at the end of this budget season we're gonna ask you to transfer I think like another hundred thousand out of that account. To give us the six hundred and seventy thousand dollars in savings that we did by refinancing our our bonds.
It was over three year period yeah okay any other questions public questions?
I have one question regarding we're talking about essentially.
Ms Almonte I need to speak up uh closer to the microphone please over there.
Talking about just shifting money around and and finding starting to find ways to.
Ms Almonte I'm sorry for interrupting again you need your name and address for the record and then.
Okay sorry sorry about my voice uh Melinda Monte three nine five Golden Beach Drive. Um yeah I just I just had one question I know right now we're kind of preliminarily talking about how we're gonna allocate funds to build these various city structures. And um so one of my questions was I know that we own the property over on Center Island the the dock I guess you wanna call it right or the marina whatever you wanna call it. And my question is why why would we not sell that and use that to cover what essentially like sixty or seventy percent of what we're talking about here right is about five million dollars?
We we talked about it one time but it's green space and number one is it would have to go through a referendum.
So so it's the mayor's correct it's a little bit more complex than that 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 lot was deeded to the lot owners of Golden Beach and so the process of getting so the so the. J lot and the P lot those are the beach pavilion and the boat dock those two pieces of property are not owned by the town of Golden Beach.
Oh I thought they were.
They're owned by the lot owners of Golden Beach and they're managed by the town of Golden Beach.
Okay.
That's why we can make them private properties we did give an easement on the P lot. Where we applied for the state grants for the Florida navigational district. We did give an easement on the P lot, where we applied for the state grants for the Florida navigational district, put our boat dock there. We do have a, we do have a public easement that goes over private property.
So, you're saying by referendum, you could put it to a vote.
No, not by referendum, the lot owners of Golden Beach. So, referendum is any voter in Golden Beach. The lot owners of Golden Beach would have to vote.
One owner per resident, I mean, one owner per house.
Per, per lot?
Yeah.
Right, okay.
True.
Need to be unanimous.
And it wouldn't need to be unanimous, because.
Single lot.
That's correct, because, because the, because those two laws were given to the lot owners by the brothers. Similar to what happened in Key Biscayne with the tennis tournament, similar to what happened in Collins.
And this is in the deed.
This is, this is a, isn't your plot, isn't the town's plot, sorry, as it's been, isn't the town's plot. So, those two plots, J and P, were plotted to the lot owners of Golden Beach for their exclusive enjoyment. And it stipulated in the plot what exactly can occur on those two lots.
Well, I know there was another idea floated with respect to building some sort of a, building some sort of an entertainment type center.
That's one of the permissible use. So, in the, in the plot, a permissible use at the P lot is to build an amenity that is for the benefit of our residents. That is, that is one of the permissible uses for that particular property.
And the, and the plaque can't be amended, um.
It would have to get unanimous vote by all the plat- by all the property owners. And then, if there's a living relative of the brothers, they could challenge that at some point, just like Collins family did when Collins Park was built, and they had to kick the frickin' library out of there because the Collins family said, hey, we donated this land for Rick to be a park, and the city built a library, we want the library knocked down, and I, as the grant writer, had to find the money to move the library next to the, to the city ballet.
How's, how, are we, is that property exempted from taxes somehow? How, I mean, if it belongs to the lot owners?
Because, because it's also deeded to the town. We don't pay taxes on that.
Yeah, we don't pay tax. You don't wanna pay tax.
I know, we don't, I know we don't.
No, we don't wanna pay taxes.
So, what you're saying is, it's not a unanimous vote, it has to be.
Majority, I mean, a hundred percent.
A hundred percent unanimous, not even a majority.
Any other questions?
Um, no, when, when are we gonna be able to see some sort of numbers that we look at in terms of, of what this is gonna all really cost? And how, and also with respect to the gym that you guys have been talking about building, what the maintenance costs are.
We're gonna talk about that in the, in the end of the meeting.
Okay.
Thank you, thank you for your question. Any other, any other public comments? Roll call, please.
Mayor Singer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bernstein?
Yes.
Councilmember Luskin?
Yes.
Councilmember Mendel?
Yes.
Councilmember Einstein?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Perfect. Item number O eleven, resolution of town council amending the professional service agreement with Main Guy Environmental Care Incorporated.
A resolution of the town council of the town of Golden Beach, Florida, amending the professional services agreement with Main Guy Environmental Care Inc. Providing for implementation and providing for an effective date.
Okay, any motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
I need a second. Uh, town manager?
Mayor, council, this is important, and I, I want all of our residents to, to be aware of this. Because, you know, we often get accused of not following our rules. So, it's time for us to go out to bid for our landscape contract. Ford lot does not require that we go out to bid, our own purchasing rules require that we go out to bid. But here's what happened. I started noticing that when Bow Harbor, Bay Harbor, Surfside, and Adventure went out to bid for new contracts, we took copies of their contracts and see, and saw what the increase was from the existing contract to the new lowest bid. The lowest of the contracts that were awarded was thirty seven percent increase from the existing contract. And in Adventure's case, it was a forty nine percent increase from the existing contract. Anything above a ten percent increase to our current contract price that we negotiated during the fall of the economy, we would no longer be able to outsource landscaping. So, what we did is, we asked Main Guy, who's our current provider that we have had not a single issue with, period, ever. We asked him to do two things. One, provide us with what their increase would be if we decided to renew their, amend their contract to add for three more years. And then, also roll into the contract services that we currently pay for outside of the contract as a pre-negotiated price. When they went back and gave us their proposal, when you take out the additional work that we currently pay for, right? The contract increase came in at five point three seven percent. It would be crazy. It would be crazy for us not to amend their contract. Provide them for three more years, we've only seen a five point three seven percent. And when you add in the additional work that's being done, it only increases our contract by twelve percent. Far less than the thirty seven and forty nine percents that we saw in other communities. And it allows us to keep a company that currently provides us beyond exceptional service, except for the color of the grass in North Parkway. Which has been the only criticism that we've ever had of Main Guy, and as you know, the grass in North Parkway was a grass that this council selected, and we always knew it was gonna be a difficult grass to maintain because it's pollen plus forest grass, which I don't even pronounce. But it's very difficult to maintain, and even though it's, it doesn't look that bad, sometimes it gets a little bit brown. But I think they've done a decent job with maintaining it. Now, in addition to that, as you know, there's a unit price per purchasing. So, when we buy orchids or calucias or whatever trees, there's a we like to lock in our prices today, so that when we buy a tree three years from now, we know what we're paying. So, when I took the cost of per item, mulch, grass, whatever, from the other cities, our contract prices are far superior than the others, and so we wanna lock those prices in. And so, that's why we're recommending that you amend this contract and give a three year renewal.
Any council comments?
They've been really good.
Yeah, they've done a great one. Any public comments? Okay, with that, we'll make a, a roll call, please.
Mayor Singer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bernstein?
Yes.
Councilmember Luskin?
Yes.
Councilmember Mendel?
Yes.
Councilmember Einstein?
I haven't seen Kathy O'Leary around, is she still around?
Twice a week, every week.
Okay.
Moving on to item number twelve, resolution of the town council assigning each council member a particular area of government. Every year, we do this after the election, so I'm gonna ask each member which department they would like to take over. We have five departments, police, finance, public works, building, and general government.
Mayor, we know that we're, we're, we're trying to speed up things, but we need to read the items to the record, or we need a motion?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. Uh, item number twelve, a resolution to town council assigning each council member a particular area of government responsibility.
A resolution of the town council of the town of Golden Beach, Florida, assigning each council member the duty to inquire into the operation of a particular area of governmental responsibility, providing for conflict, providing for, for implementation, and providing for an effective date.
Any motion to approve?
I move to approve, stat.
I need a second.
Second.
Okay, I'll start with you, Councilman Einstein, since you're the new boy on the block. Uh, which department would you like? You want police? So, Councilman Einstein will be police.
Unless somebody else wants.
Uh, Mayor Bern- uh, Vice Mayor Bernstein, since you're second new boy on the block, which department would you like?
What do you have me down on? Finance is fine.
You want, no, you were financed last year, got to switch.
General.
Building and zoning.
Building and zoning as Councilman.
Mayor, if, if I could interject, I'd like for him to be general because he has a lot of concerns with the civic center moving forward, as he brought up at this meeting.
He's building and zoning, he wants building.
I'll take general, that's good.
You can't switch.
I just did.
Okay, Councilman Bern- Vice Mayor is general. Councilman Mendel, I'll give you third choice. You can either be, uh, public works.
I'll do finance.
You will do finance.
So, I'll do public works.
You will do, you were public works last time.
Well, there's nothing, if there's nothing left.
No, you can, you can do building and zoning.
Okay.
No, no, you're building and zoning, right?
No, I was building.
Oh, so you're general.
Yeah, he's financed now.
Oh, finance.
Who's on first?
I'll be whatever you want me to be.
Yeah, me too, it's.
You're fi- he's financed?
You're building.
You're building.
Building and, okay.
I'll be police department. I mean, bench police, sorry.
I'm ready, so.
Okay, so, in the record, we have Councilman, uh, Einstein as police department. We have Councilman, uh, Mendel as finance. We have Councilwoman Luskin, building, uh, building department. And we have Count, uh, Vice Mayor Bernstein, general government, okay?
Public works.
Um, the mayor is public works. Everyone okay with that?
Yeah.
Now, I'm gonna ask you guys in three minutes, all right, what's your position? Okay, uh, roll call, please.
Mayor Singer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bernstein?
Yes.
Councilmember Luskin?
Yes.
Councilmember Mendel?
Yes.
Councilmember Einstein?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Item number thirteen, a resolution of town council adopting a schedule for fees for beach and park activities.
A resolution of the town council of the town of Golden Beach, Florida, adopting a schedule of fees for beach and park activities, providing for implementation and providing for an effective date.
Any motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
I need a second.
Second.
So, this was brought up by, I believe, uh, Councilman Mendel, uh, last meeting. So, in the back page, you'll see the, all the existing fees. I'm gonna make a recommendation, and then you guys can, uh, piggyback, or you can agree or disagree, or make some other suggestions. The only two fees I think we need to change, and Councilman, uh, Mendel, you brought this up. The permit to use the beach pavilion was two fifty, I say we increase that, just my suggestion, is up to five hundred dollars. And the other one is the permit to use the, uh, town park, which was, uh, fifty dollars. Okay, and that's Tweedle Park mo- mostly, right?
North Park and, and all, all the parks.
All the parks. I think we need to raise that for two fifty, and two, up to two hundred fifty dollars.
That's not what you said.
What did I say?
A hundred.
What?
A hundred.
What?
A hundred.
A hundred?
Yep.
You said a hundred. I'm suggesting a little more than that, because the maintenance of the parks, it just, for example, Tweedle Park, every time they rent it, they leave it totally in a disarray, and the wear and tear of everything, you know, it's and people are taking advantage, and to pay two fifty to rent the park is nothing. I mean, you go anywhere else, you're gonna pay that to rent anything.
And you remember the photo that I sent you not long ago, how it was trashed?
What if, what if you start enforcing the deposit, though, and just double the deposit? And if there's, if there's, if it's torn up, you can use it like that, just as an alternative.
Mayor, just to reflect, re- refresh your recollection, so when we were discussing this, we, you, you proposed two fifty, and I proposed a hundred, but one of the things that we agreed to was it require the public work staff to attend the events.
Right. We saw the beach pavilion or any of the park would require public work staff for a minimum of three hours.
That's correct.
But, I mean.
Depending on how many people, or?
No.
Yes, it, yes, if it requires a police, it requires public works.
Okay. But the point being is, and, uh, Councilman Mendel brought it up, and it's a very good point, is that the wear and tear, we just spent so much money on the beach pavilion, okay, and we just spent so much money on Tweedle Park. And people have parties, and sometimes these people aren't direct residents of Golden Beach. They're a brother, or sister, or cousin, or a friend, and I just think.
Or nobody.
Or nobody, the, for, you know, if we're gonna maintain these to the level that we wanna maintain, I mean, we just spent millions on, on, uh, for the beach pavilion, you know, and we spent a lot on Twe- on Tweedle Park and the park. You know, to s- to increase these fees, I think it's well deserving. That's my opinion, everyone has their opinion, and we can come to an agreement. I'll start with you, Himey, because you brought it up.
No, I, I agree with what you're saying, uh, just to be clear, the cleanup fee, one public work employees, twenty five dollars an hour, minimum three hours, regardless of the amount of people, correct?
No, so we would only require it if a police is required, so there's a threshold of thirty people before police is required, so at thirty people, then you require public works.
Okay, fair, that makes more sense, okay. Uh, the only thing I would switch, though, uh, maybe, we don't, Tweedle Park, I agree with you a hundred percent. Uh, two fifty, I think, is reasonable. Uh, however, North Park, that might be a little too aggressive, considering there's nothing.
There.
There.
Yeah, it's.
So, maybe we, we can split that up and leave.
Is North Park used much for a part, oh, it is.
Yeah, when the, when you have bounce houses and stuff like that, that's.
So, what do you think North Park should be?
Hundred, yeah.
That's fine.
And, uh, and the other thing.
A hundred for all parks except for Tweedle.
Right.
Yeah, and I would just, with one caveat, if it's a small party of like less than ten people.
We don't, we don't, when, when it's a small gathering of like less than ten people, we don't require a permit.
Okay, there you go.
You also can't reserve it, you just go and use it.
Yeah, perfect.
My question to you is, when I sent you the photograph a few weeks ago of what Tweedle Park was like after the party, did we withhold?
So, we did.
Fees, did we, because.
We did.
Remember, a resident early the next morning went and.
We did, and then they challenged us.
They did?
Uh, yes, because in fairness to the challenge, they don't know where they put the trash. Public works is closed, they don't, our, our garbage trucks are closed, they didn't wanna take the trash to their homes. That's why I recommended to the mayor that whenever there's a party, we require public work employees to deal with the fallout of, of.
Well, certainly, we have three or four large garbage cans somewhere.
Yeah, they're there, they're just didn't use them.
They just threw the stuff on the floor.
No, they just, no, they, in fairness to them, they left it in bags next to the vending machines.
Oh.
Well, what did they say? They didn't see the garbage?
It's irrelevant, it's a one person, let's just talk about the fees. Okay, we can talk about that. Anyone else have any comments on the fees?
Just, just real quick, so, somebody has twenty two year olds, three year olds going to Tweedle Park. We're gonna charge them how much?
Two hundred fifty dollars.
No, not if they're going, you're allowed to go to Tweedle Park.
No, if they're renting it.
No, I know, but they're throwing a two year old party.
That's a, that's a, that's a rental.
It's a rental.
If you go to Chuck E. Cheese, they charge you five hundred bucks.
Right.
What, you think it's too much?
I, I don't, you know, I, I understand the ocean, you know, and let's detract people from using it.
The wear and tear.
You have to see, uh, what Judy's, what, uh, Councilwoman Luskin's saying, I saw one a few months ago.
You wouldn't have believed it.
It's terrible.
Yeah.
Little kids, yeah, what's the difference between little kids and big kids?
All the, everything that we spent on the equipment there, the slides, everything was cracked, everything was dirty. We're losing money on the wear and tear pretty fast. I would just like to caveat this, the money that we're raising from this should be going back into the parks and into the.
It goes into your miscellaneous revenues, and then it, it gets allocated, just like everybody else says.
Any other comments?
I like Himey's suggestions, uh, the only other thing is, it's being destroyed, as much as you say, maybe we should increase the deposits, even for the, um.
The challenge deposit, and I hate to interrupt right there, the deposits are very difficult for us to collect on. And every time we try to collect on a deposit, we get challenged, and then we end up having to release it because they, there seem to be valid, valid jar- uh, things. So, by having a, by, you can't challenge a rental fee. A deposit is very, you could challenge it, you could argue, you know, that the damage wasn't yours, that it was pre-existing, a rental fee is just the fee to use it. So, whether you damaged it or not, that's what the fee's gonna be. We do go aggressively after deposits that are very egregious. You know, when the person is clearly violated, they did that, they've left oil stains on the floor, those we go after aggressively. But when somebody says, hey, there was no garbage cans, and I didn't know where they put the garbage, it's kinda hard for us to say, okay, we're gonna keep your deposit.
Okay.
So, if there's a policeman at the thing, do they check out people at, no?
They, they are required to, but it's a very lax process to do so. It has only for events of thirty or more where a police is required.
Okay, any other public comments?
Oh, I agree, whole heart is there.
Perfect. So, I just wanna reiterate, so we're gonna increase the beach pavilion deposit from, uh, fee from two fifty to five hundred dollars. We're gonna increase Tweedle Park from fifty to two fifty, and North and South Park will go to a hundred dollars. Okay, uh, roll call, please. Did you get that, town clerk?
Yes.
Yes, yes, I got it.
A roll call, please.
Mayor Singer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bernstein?
Yes.
Councilmember Luskin?
Yes.
Councilmember Mendel?
Yes.
Councilmember Einstein?
Good idea. We're not leaving.
No, I just.
Don't even say anything.
How about the big weddings, when they do those, still five hundred dollars, right?
Yep.
Before it was two fifty?
Yes.
Okay, uh, some discussion items, town manager, uh, there's two items on there. Discussion of the fountains at the strand, and discussion and timeline of the civic center.
So, Mayor, um, at your direction. We just finished the fountains at the strand. Some of our residents love them, some of our residents don't, don't. So, what we did is, we came up, we wanted to go with some conceptual idea of the way to enhance the way the fountains work. Of course, it is not something that we funded in our, in our capital budget this year. We do have funds available for projects that should be used to allocate these projects, so. We did have five concepts to choose from, here. We did have five concepts to choose from, um, at the end of the day, concept, some of them were pretty just silly. Um, so, the best concept that we had for your consideration is concept number five. We aren't gonna show you one, two, three, and four. But concept number five is basically to make the wall look like a wave, the mirror was going on across the water on the other side. And then all of the concept had, do you see where it says Town of Golden Beach? All of the concepts had that same Town of Golden Beach on the walls. The only difference between concepts one, one through four, one, two, three, and four, is what that other image is gonna be. So Mayor, you asked that we get some preliminary numbers on what this would cost. For this particular concept, the preliminary figures to do the wave and the sign is currently valued at about a hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars to do both signs. If you just wanted to do the sign and no wave, you just need the rest of the wall blank, it's forty-seven thousand dollars.
And what would that be made out of, the sign?
It's a, it's a, it's a stucco thick marble, uh, there's a rendering in here. If you look at, if you look at page number five, it's these stones here. The freak house.
I've had, right, I've had, I, I, I personally think that the fountains look plain.
I agree.
And something needs to be done. And several residents have mentioned to me, you know, why don't we put Golden Beach, Town of Golden Beach there? Cause when you're entering it, it's a beautiful focal, focal point. And again, we've always concentrated on the strand because when you drive into Golden Beach, you see the beach pavilion and everyone goes, wow. And then you see the strand building and you go, wow, you got these two fountains that are just plain whitewashed.
And they would be mirrored. It will set.
And it just says, it says nothing, and I think it's wasted space and I think we should, you know, put, hey, you're entering the Town of Golden Beach. So I know it sounds like a lot of money, but it's something that would last for, you know, years. And if you amortize it over the next twenty-five years, cause we'd never have to change it, it's really immaterial. But whether it be this or something, we need to put something on those walls, because they're plain, dull, and boring.
We kind of agreed years ago when we did the entire area, that we were gonna wait until we had a few more bucks to be able to do. I like the wave with the.
And the problem with that is that street sign, is that light post is in the middle of the, of the sign, so it can't be, right, you can't put Town of Golden Beach yet. We tried it and it's broken up and it doesn't, doesn't look good.
The other option, really, was city, where they put palm tree next to the main, that's horrible, which means I was cheating.
Oh no, that looks sooner. Cheating.
The only thing I'm concerned about, I, I love independently how it puts on there, but when you look at, you're gonna have Town of Golden Beach on one side.
On both sides.
And then on the other side, then you're gonna have it across the street.
This is entering.
No, I understand, but I'm saying, I'm just saying you have Town of Golden Beach across the street, then you're gonna have two other signs down.
Are you gonna say two redundant?
No, I just.
Is there, isn't there a town called, something on the.
Small. Says police Town of Golden.
Right, right on the front of the garden.
They also have, they also have it on the beach, so it's.
On the pavilion side.
Yeah.
I've just never seen something where you have three, four signs, it just, it seems like we were overdoing it to me.
Well, one is going north, one is going south, and the other is going west, east.
Right, so it's not, it's not overdoing. I mean, in my opinion, I mean, you guys can voice your opinion, but I just think entering the town, you, you need something.
It looks unfinished.
Yeah, it looks unfinished and it looks very rich.
I, I agree the fountains look undone, I'm just saying, like, you already have it as elegant with the wording Town of Golden Beach at the beach pavilion. You already know, like, you see you're in Town of Golden Beach. I, I, I'm just thinking.
Are we voting on this tonight?
No, we're just talking about it.
Okay.
I'm just saying like maybe we can do something more native with the sign, like how you're showing as opposed to saying Town of Golden Beach, three different places within that intersection.
A hundred, a hundred and, what did you, a hundred?
Hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars for both signs with these waves.
So looking at.
And that was just one quick, we didn't go out the bid, we asked for one.
I get a lot less than that.
It was just one, somebody asked me to get a number and I got a number.
Outside of the precast, or not precast, the waves, that stuff. The, the blue on top, is that something?
That's currently there.
That's currently there.
That's correct.
So, quick question, have you seen the house as you go in on the left hand? If you're coming in from the strand on the.
The new house they're building?
South, southwest side, the new house going in.
Yeah, it's next to me.
Is that next to you, so they put on a, a wall surface like a.
Just, like a marble.
Yeah, it's kinda, it's kinda nice.
Well, that's what this is.
Is this the same sort of?
Similar, similar material, that's right.
This is like a stone.
No, it's like a, what is it, Alex?
So this is a precast, uh, stone that shows a wave pattern. What they have is, they actually have stone at three ninety-nine.
Which, which one are you suggesting of all these?
Oh, we're nowhere near that, we're nowhere nee, we're nowhere, we're nowhere near selecting materials, we're not, nowhere near selecting the sizes.
Guys, let me explain something. If you guys say, just, uh, advance it a little further, like into it, the Town Manager and I will get more quotes on it, we'll come up with some more suggestions. It was just something to throw out at you, cause we don't, we think there's an irregularity, looking at it.
I'm gonna give you an example, just, nope, good.
What if you, what if it was a way to increase, uh, well, what?
Because nobody can see you, no.
Or here, or, or, or here, here, here.
What if, come Alex, what if you, um, what if you increase, I don't know, I don't, I forget what it looks like at this time, but what if you increase the entrance sign on the strand building? And then just did something really lovely with both the fountains, you know, so you have your entrance with your sign and then your fountains are beautiful. Because cutting it off and putting half the lettering, it looks lopsided and, in my opinion, and not, and not very nice.
Why don't we do this, Alex, cause I don't wanna beat this to a dead horse? Good suggestion, why don't the Town Manager and I come up with some more suggestions and using the marble and listen to Councilman Bernstein and maybe do some drawings without the, without it? And then we'll bring it back to the council next meeting.
Right, but I think we're all agreed that it needs something.
The stone, but we need to do something, alright?
Here, you're loud and clear.
Yeah, thank you. Just, so you guys, uh, got my thinking, I do have reservations on this just because of the cost, a hundred twenty-eight thousand dollars, especially considering we just went over the budget. And seeing where our fund balance is now and the product's moving forward. So I do agree with you that it looks plain and we do need something. But if we did, did away with the lettering, that probably cuts it in half to be. Oh, it's eighty, so it'd be about eighty thousand, right?
No, 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 and, and there's, and there's some plast, there are all kinds of materials and in fact, one of the materials is these plastic things that you basically, it looks same, same effect.
Yeah.
And then you put a little bit of stone over it and it looks just as good for ten thousand bucks.
Exactly, as the mayor said, that's where, that's where I was going, just try to find something that's very.
I just wanna move it along and progress.
Department looks great.
So Town Manager, I'm instructing you, the council's instructing you, let's take it to the next level, come up with some other suggestions, bring it back to the council with some secure budget.
The other, the other thing, just while you're doing it, you know when it's engraved into the stone, I don't know if that's more or less or something, but it's subtle.
You can't do that in there because of block. You can't engrave block.
Councilor, we'll, we'll bring you some more ideas. Next item?
Next item. So. We have, as the council directed, over the last couple of months, we have been slowly working on the design criteria requirements for your civic center master plan. As you remember, at the last time we had a discussion on civic center, the community voiced their concerns in terms of what they wanted and what we were proposing. So what we have done is we have developed a design criteria packet that needs to be approved by all of us before it goes into a bid document. We have decided that the best course of action to build a, a new town hall is to do a process called design build. A design build process guarantees you a maximum price. No overages, if there are overages, the contractor is responsible for them. When you design a building and you put out the bid, you don't control the cost because you don't know what type of conflicts there may be, you don't know what kind of, uh, amenities need to be changed. With a design build, you say, these are the minimum things that we want and this is the maximum that we're willing to pay for it. Can you build it? And your building community, and there's a large design build community, says, okay, Town of Golden Beach, you're being unrealistic with your numbers, or, hey, I'll build it for that number. But when they say, hey, I'll build it for that number, they need to build every single element that you place in your design build criteria. They don't, we negotiate fixtures and quality of material, but every element that you ask for must be built. And then you negotiate like what your fixtures and finishes are gonna be. And that process takes, the negotiation process takes months. So what we have for you tonight, and we're not gonna discuss it fully, we have prepared a very final preliminary design build criteria package. We want you to take it home, read it, digest it, understand it, mark it up, raise all of your concerns, and then meet with me independently. So we can start to put together the final design build criteria. But let me just, and quickly, I don't know, Mayor, Mayor, we need to hurry up, but quickly, let me tell you what we're doing. We're building, what we're proposing is in the new site area, sorry, let me pass these out to you.
We once did a design and build, I thought years ago with, with, uh, the guard gate, yes, well, but we did once.
So.
We made it clear that.
Well, we called it design and build, but.
Okay, so let me tell you what the elements are and you can look to this later, but. Site A, which is where the new civic center is gonna go, we're proposing a three-story structure, parking underneath with some storage for the police. The second floor, your administrative buildings and your building department and your police department. And on the third floor, a multi-purpose town council chamber and a bunker room slash E O C for your police department. That's site A. So at a minimum, they need to build this building that meets those criterias and a bunch of other stuff. We talked about how the bunker has to be port cells, that's why you need to read it. In site B, which is where your new amenities are gonna go, so your new basketball court, your new volleyball court, and your new half court. We stipulate how those three amenities need to be built in site B. Site C, which is your existing Tweedle Park, gets no improvement. That needs to be protected during construction and protected in a way that our residents can continue to use it. So the onus falls on the contractors to preserve that area so our residents can continue to use site C while under construction. In site D, which is this area, we call for the closing of the street in front of town hall to add an additional nine thousand square feet of green space. We call for the alleyway behind this building to be preserved. We call for this building to be gutted. New ADA bathrooms built for men and women. An interior staircase that gets us to the second floor. For the first floor to be all open space for a gym and maybe a, a studio for yoga and stuff like that. The second floor to be gutted and made into a multi-purpose room, and then the rooftop of this building to be used for events. So secure, and then some facade renovations. In the public works area, we call for the preserving of the existing public works facilities, knocking down the second garage of public works. To provide for a not, uh, four thousand, provide for a, provide for a, excuse me. Sorry, just don't have these numbers memorized, provide for a. I can't tell you the square footage, but provide for a new dog park in the cul-de-sac of where the public works area is. So new dog park goes where the existing second garage that we're knocking down is. Provide for a vertical garden to hide the existing public works facilities. So as you're going up Terracina, it would be a vertical garden that hides that building. So every single one of those elements that just, that I just articulated to you verbally, has been captured in this document. And when the design build community receives the design criteria, they must meet all of those objectives with a guaranteed total cost of no more than five point two million dollars. That's how we're gonna put it out the bid. The building, the bidding community may say, uh-uh, this is a nine million dollar project, you can't build this. Or you may have one to say, you know what, I'm hungry and I'm gonna do this for five point two million dollars, or less, or more. But once we, once we go out the bid and the bids come back to us, an independent committee will evaluate each bid, rank them, and recommend to the mayor and I the firm that we should begin negotiations with. Once we determine that that's the right firm, we take it to the council and the council will select that firm. That firm will then have a period of up to a hundred and twenty days to work with the mayor and I to prepare final design plans and final design cost for the building that we want built. We then execute a contract with that company. We now know exactly what we're gonna get built and what that cost is. They then have whatever the time period that we give them to build, and actually, part of the response is to tell us how long it's gonna take to build. Once they're selected, if there's a conflict, if there's a design, they design it. So if they put a pipe through a wall that wasn't supposed to go through and they have to do a change order, not on us. You design it, you own it, you, you have to build it for that price. We no longer carry the risk of change orders, unforeseen expenses, unknown factors. They're required to do their due diligence to test all of our sites, test the, do sample boring, sample site, site. Come into this building, check the walls, make sure that it's structurally sound, all of that risk that we would normally own ourselves falls on them. It does take a little bit longer because there's a lot more due diligence that is, that falls on them. And the negotiations become, now, we don't get, we don't get to dictate what we get built. We will have a final say on what the design looks like. We will either accept or reject the design that they give us, right? But you know the renderings that we have all seen, it may not look nothing like that. They may be able to design something different to get to the five point two million dollars that meets all of the design criteria, but looks completely different than the rendering that you have. But at the end of the day, when they submit the packages back to you, when they submit that rendering and that tentative schedule, we then say, yes, we like or no, we don't. And if we don't like them, we can go to the next one that we do like or not, or not like. What we're asking you tonight is, take this package home, digest it, read it, evaluate it, mark it up, if you're a former principal, get your red pen out. Tell us what we need to include in this package, tell me what we have missed. If I have articulated something to you that is not written in that document, say, hey, Alex, you said at the meeting, you're gonna do this, but it's not in this document. Because once we finalize this design criteria package, which we're also gonna share with three members of our community that are in the building community and an independent procurement director from another city to evaluate it. We're gonna then bring it back to you for final ratification so that the town attorney can put into a boilerplate design build big document to go out to the design community. In your packets, on page number two, which I don't have the packets, so this is somebody, thank you. In your package on page number two is a tentative, tentative schedule on how we plan to move this project moving forward. Residents at home, if you're interested in looking at what we're talking about, on the main page of the town's website, on the main page of the town's website, the entire design of this facility is on there, take a look at it. Council, on page two is our tentative schedule on how to move this project forward. I have spoken way too much tonight, so I'm gonna shut up and take any questions that you may have.
Okay, guys, so we want these packets back within thirty days. Okay, so you have pretty much a month to go through these, and that's why we're not rushing this project, we're taking our time. But you need to take a concerted effort and go through the package, okay? So with.
So three very quick questions here, one, I'm assuming the, I was, the timeline, groundbreaking July fourth, twenty twenty?
Yes.
Twenty nineteen?
No, twenty twenty, yeah.
And the next council meeting's the twenty-first?
Twenty-first of May.
And then the independent committee, is that essentially just gonna be made up of the, uh, the voting advisory board?
No, so the independent committee is probably gonna be made up, independent residents of the community such as Mary, maybe the Hollows, Mary the Coens.
Selected by?
Appointed by the council.
Okay.
The council will appoint the, the civic center master plan, design criteria, the civic center master plan selection committee will be appointed by the, by this board, by this council.
And last thing, so I understand why I go through this, uh, does the material that the site A, the, the new town hall, uh, does the material matter with regards to any appropriations we would get? If we don't get any appropriations from Tallahassee, would it change anything?
So, excellent, excellent question. So the question is, if we were not to get any assistance from the state, would we still want a bunker built? Because a bunker does drive your costs up for that section, because when you read your design criteria packet, the bunker section of the building needs to be an independent structure to the building that's being built. It does drive your cost by about fifteen percent. And so the question then comes to the council, do we wanna spend fifteen percent for a bunker that we're not getting any assistance for?
And my answer would be, and we'll discuss it at a later date, my answer to that would be, the whole purpose of building the town hall is if there's a disaster storm, we wanna have a command post there. You know, so the police can stay there, so the town does not go unattended.
I think that's a critical component of it.
I agree. But we can discuss it, whatever.
Forfeit your funds can be used for that, right?
Two, we're only, we're, we're only proposing to use two million dollars, because let me be very clear, and the attorneys are here. We can only use forfeited assets for the percentage of the building that's being used for public safety or public, um, general use. So you can use it for like, the rec center could be used, you can use drug money for the rec center, and you can use drug money for the, for the police department elements. You cannot use these assets for the general government area of the building, that is not a permissible use.
It overlaps.
How about the bunker?
In some cases.
How about the bunker fit?
Mayor, I've gotta do my job and put into the record what's factual, and I'm sorry that it may drive the meeting a little bit longer, but I've gotta do my jobs.
But can you bang that down?
And it's important.
Right.
The bunker would be covered or not covered?
The bunker would be covered, that is considered public safety, so that is a covered area.
Okay, next council meeting is the.
Oh wait, no, we can't adjourn yet.
Twenty second.
Why?
Twenty-second.
We can't adjourn yet.
Because Alex doesn't wanna go home.
Because.
The twenty-first.
Somebody's birthday.
Twenty-first.
It's yours.
Yesterday was Councilman Mandel's birthday.
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Hymie. Happy birthday to you.
Oh, my God, am I gonna be killed?
Is that an ice cream cake?
Miss Dad will make a motion to adjourn in a second. All favor say aye?